Six oh five people twenty fifth right change. And the mayor and Westford team who runs this joint session, glad to have you here as well as both planning. One same for Westford or planning commissioners, thank you. We're going to start off with the plug of the leaders. Certainly just to flag the United States of America to the Republic of which is Texas. Next, James, you have the role.
Yes, all right, I'll start with Oak Ridge City Council, Mayor Cutten.
Here.
Councillor Kenyon.
Here.
Councillor Coker. Councillor Hooker.
Here.
Councillor Bjornson.
Here.
Councillor Tarman.
Here.
And Councillor Hollitt. All right, I'll move on to Westford City Council, Mayor Williams.
Here.
Councillor Packard. Councillor Healy.
Yes.
Councillor Bishop. Councillor Johnstone. Okay, and then moving on to the Oak Ridge Planning Commission, Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner McClellan.
Here.
Commissioner Grant.
Here.
And Commissioner Berenbaum.
Here.
Any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda from council, commission, CA? All right. Now we're off to item five business from the Oak Ridge and Westford City Council, that's five point one. James, you want to lead this off and introduce the subject?
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so tonight, we're gonna have a presentation regarding the Oak Ridge-Westford Housing Needs Analysis. Done by Cascadia Partners. And I will turn it over to Jamin Kimmel to introduce himself and start the presentation.
Great, thanks, James. Can everyone hear me there? Okay. Give me a thumbs up if so, good. So my name is Jamin Kimmel, and I am an urban planner and a partner with Cascadia Partners. And so we're a urban planning consulting firm based out of Portland. And we have been contracted through the state as a state agency that gives grants to cities to do housing plans. And we were contracted through the state to work with Oak Ridge and Westford on this housing needs analysis. And so I'm here today, we're nearing the conclusion of the project. And we've been working on the housing needs analysis report over the last several months. And so we are excited to be here to share it with you, answer your questions, talk about what it means going forward. And give you some time to kind of get familiar with the report. I'll talk a little bit more about the background, I'll go ahead and get into the slide presentation here. Maybe take you through some of the information. Okay. And everyone see that, okay? Think I'm seeing head nods. Everyone's a little far away, so. Okay, so the agenda for tonight, we want to start just a little background context for why might the cities do a housing needs analysis, what is its purpose? And then we'll give you some of the highlights of some of our key findings of the analysis. Also talk about some highlights from some community engagement that we did over the last several months. It included a survey and an open house. Then we'll go into some draft housing strategies, which is more about what action might the city take to respond to some of the housing needs that were identified. And then we'll wrap up talking about next steps. So to start off with project background, so what is a housing needs analysis? And I should say before I get into this, I know several of you in the room either attended the open house or on the advisory committee, so some of this information will be redundant, but we know not everyone was at one of those meetings. And so bear with us as we go through some of the same information, but we want to make sure everyone is up to speed. So an HNA, as it's called, is a study of the city's existing housing stock and its future housing needs, as those may change over time, in particular as the city grows. And so it's a regular planning process that many cities in Oregon, in particular larger cities, are required to go through an HNA. But it answers some of the following kinds of questions, so kind of how much and what type of housing is needed over the next 20 years? Does a city actually have enough land zoned for the housing to meet that projected long-term need? Does a city need more land for any specific types of housing? And then what other, what are some of the housing strategies that the city can use to facilitate development of the housing that's needed? So what can the city do to try to impact the housing market? And make sure that the right kinds of housing and enough housing overall is being developed? So that's our task, we have been working on this project for about a year, maybe a little under a year, actually. And we have been going through some of the technical steps in the process, which you see in the blue bar above, but as we've been doing that, we've been checking in and working with some local stakeholders and representatives. So there's an advisory committee for the project, made up of representatives from both Oak Ridge and Westford. And we've had three meetings with them over the course of the project. We also did a community survey in the fall. And you can see here now we're nearing the kind of conclusion of the project in the spring of this year. And we have prepared a draft, he's in a housing needs analysis report, which should have been distributed to all of you prior to the meeting. And we had a community open house event a couple of weeks ago. And now we're here at this joint planning commission and city council meeting. So nearing the end of the project, and so with that in mind, the goal for today is to get your input on the approach of the housing analysis and particularly some of the strategies that are identified. And try to understand if we should make any final revisions to the HNA before we move into the next stage, which would be to have each of the city councils formally adopt the report via resolution, adopting it as a planning document that will guide the city's work over the next several years. So that's the task for tonight, and so let me start to get into some of the key findings of the document and of our work. So we always start out with looking forward in big picture, getting a projection of how many new housing units are needed in order to accommodate population growth. And so these numbers of population growth are based on the Population Research Center, which is an institute at Portland State University, that the state has tasked with doing population projections for every city across the state. And the state requires that every city use that for their planning purposes. And so that's where the population growth numbers come from. But we need to take that and do some analysis to then convert that to a projection of total housing units needed. And so that's what you see in the table on this slide. So Oak Ridge is projected to grow by about 750 people over the next 20 years. There'd be a need for something about 370 or so housing units to help house that population growth. It also, in Westfords, is smaller, but still projected to grow in the future of about 70 or so residents. Need about 35 new units to meet that growth. And that's just the housing to meet the future population growth. And that's primarily our task here today is to plan to make sure the city has enough land and enough land zoned in the right types of zones to make sure that that housing could be built to meet that need. That doesn't necessarily mean that the existing housing stock is serving existing residents perfectly. We'll talk a little bit about what we see as some of the issues with the existing housing stock and how the city can make changes to try to better meet the needs of current residents as well. So let me go to the next slide here, so some of those demographic and housing affordability factors that we consider in housing needs analysis include household size and median age. These two are good indicators of the types of households that are more prevalent in each community. And so, for example, Oak Ridge has some larger households than than Westford does, so would mean probably most likely more families with children. And also has a lower median age, which also indicates more families with children. Oak Ridge is median age and household size are more similar to the state as a whole. And what that indicates for us in terms of housing need is that there's probably a need, and we confirm this in the community, one for more rental units. That's it's important for especially younger families as they're getting off the ground. But also starter homes or are homes that are more affordable for people just entering the market or on a lower moderate income level. Affordable to purchase, I should think. Westford is quite a bit of a different demographic profile. There is smaller households and higher median age, so more retired adults, more kind of or older adults, retired couples, fewer families with children. And so what that indicates to us usually is that there might be a need for downsizing options. So housing types that would fit the need for someone who maybe has paid off their house or has a house that's that's too much house for them and they're ready to move on from that. So smaller homes in general are often a good fit for places that have a lot of older adults. But also multi-generational housing. And so what we mean by that primarily is something like an accessory dwelling unit. So you might have a small cottage in the backyard that an elderly parent can live in. And maybe the the rest of the family lives in the main house. So those are the kinds of housing types that we see as potentially great and greater need in Westford. So household income is also important to consider because it affects how much people can pay for housing and what kinds of housing might be affordable. Both Oak Ridge and Westford have lower median household incomes than Lane County as a whole or the state as a whole. And under some federal guidelines that help us determine kind of how many lower income households there are, we'd find that there's three of four, three of four households in each community would qualify as low income under those guidelines. And this really supports a need for, first off, subsidized lower income housing units. So at the lower end of the income bracket, it is very difficult for people to afford housing at the market rate. And some form of subsidy, whether that be a new development or an existing property that is owned by a housing authority or a nonprofit. But income restricted housing that is kept affordable for those lower income populations, an important part of the mix in Oak Ridge and Westford. But also things like manufactured homes, which are more affordable housing type, and multifamily housing or apartments in general can be made more affordable to lower income households. Housing cost burden is another way to to assess how affordable housing is in the community today. And both communities have a high share of households that are burdened by housing costs, but it varies a little bit in each community. And so when we say cost burden, we mean that the household is in a housing unit where they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs. And in Oak Ridge, both owners and renters are equally cost burdened. So about 40% of households are experiencing that cost burden. And this tells us that there's a lot of lower moderate income households who have purchased and are owners but are purchasing a house that's difficult for them to afford. And it's 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 above and beyond what would be ideal. Renters experiencing cost burden is actually more common. And again, supports the need for those subsidized lower income housing units, manufactured homes and multifamily housing. Westford is a little bit different, less owners experiencing house cost burden. But the few number of renters there are in Westford are all experiencing cost burden. So according to the census data, 100% of them. So again, supporting a need for having some housing options that are more affordable at a lower income. Home values are another indication of this, so home values have been increasing and especially in recent years. I'm sure no news to many of you. And they've been increasing at a rate that is outpacing people's incomes going up. And this is happening in many, many places across the country. It's Oak Ridge and Westford are no exception, so over the last, between 20 and 20, 2020 and 2022, when we first compiled this data, the housing prices had grown annually at a rate of 17% in Oak Ridge and Westford, just a fairly high rate. They've since slowed down on an annual rate. And the 2023 data indicates that the range of median home values is a little bit lower, but still close to that 260 or so thousand. And so it's important to compare that against what would be affordable to someone earning a kind of middle income. And in Oak Ridge and Westford, that is between the range of 110,000 to 189,000. So kind of your average household, that's their their income. And so right now, the median home price is significantly higher than what could be affordable to someone earning the average or median income. So given all these factors, demographic and housing affordability, then we can use that to then make a projection about what kind of housing types might be needed in the future. And so how should the existing housing stock evolve in order to better meet the needs of both the existing residents and the future residents that are likely to move to Oak Ridge and Westford? And so you can see in these charts, they show what we've projected for the future mix of housing types in each community. And so, for example, in Oak Ridge, we're projecting, while there is very few multifamily units today, shown in that blue bar at the top, projecting a need for at least 10% of the units in the future to be multifamily units. The other categories of housing types we project could stay similar, relatively similar. But that doesn't mean that new housing types of that type need to be developed in the future. So for example, 13% of Oak Ridge's housing is in townhouses or plexes, which are kind of if you have one to four attached units together, so kind of a very small apartment building or a row of townhouses. And not many of those have been developed in recent years. But in the future, in order to meet future housing needs, it's recommended that at least 15% of new housing be townhouses or plexes. So in Westford, it's a similar projected mix in the future, but slightly less of multifamily units, townhouses and plexes, simply because the existing mix is so weighted towards single-family housing. We want to give a realistic projection for what is possible in the future to diversify the housing stock. We don't think it's possible for Westford to shift to from 90% single-family detached houses to be more than about 70% single-family detached houses in the future. Okay, so now we shift from that part of our work was to look at housing needs and projecting forward to the future housing stock. But we also, a really important part of this process is the kind of land planning element. So it's really a land use planning project. So we're looking at a map here that is a inventory of the buildable land in the cities of Oak Ridge and Westford that we've compiled. And what the purpose of doing this is to then assess the capacity for new housing development on those buildable lands in the city. And so the the buildable land inventory does things like remove all properties that are developed. We remove properties that are too small to actually have any new housing on it, that don't have enough space left. Housing and importantly, properties that are constrained from development by environmental issues or features like wetlands or steep slopes, very important for floodplains. So we take that mapping exercise and then produce an estimate of the amount of buildable land that each city has. And the the overall takeaway is that both cities have enough land in their urban growth boundary to meet their overall projected housing needs. And so in Oak Ridge, there is 246 buildable acres of land that equates to about a capacity for about 1,200 housing units, which is significantly higher than the projected need for 360 or so new housing units. Westford has a similar story, there's about 60 buildable acres of land. We equate that to about a capacity of about 200 units. There's only 35 units that are needed. And so what this tells us is that there is not a good rationale for the cities to expand their urban growth boundary to take in more land to build housing. And that's an important finding because that is one option to try to meet your housing needs. But it requires from the state that you show that you have a a demonstrated need for that land to build the housing. And based on how much buildable land there is within each city and the population growth and have future housing need, we don't find that there's a need to expand the urban growth boundary. However, it's really important to consider what kinds of housing can be built on the buildable land that's in the city. And so what this chart does is summarizes our breakdown of the housing capacity by housing type compared to the 20-year projected need for that housing type. And so the need is in blue and the capacity in the city is in green. And so if we start with single-family detached housing, so Oak Ridge has a 20-year need for about 200 units, but there's a capacity for about 1,100 units. And the reason for that is most of the city of Oak Ridge's buildable land is zoned in the R1 zone. And the R1 zone primarily allows single-family detached houses. It allows duplexes in limited circumstances. So we project that the majority of the housing, 90% plus of the housing in that zone would be built with single-family detached in the future. Then when we get to the non-single-family housing, there's significantly less of that that's needed in the future, but it's a really important part of the housing stock, as it helps to meet the need for some of the more affordable housing types. And so among the townhome and plex units, there's a need for about 55 units in the future to capacity for 80. So enough capacity, but one could argue that maybe not enough capacity because there is certainly some margin for error in these numbers. And it's important to have more capacity than your need, so that you can make sure that if potentially the need is greater and more townhomes and plexes are in demand, then the market would be able to respond to that and actually have the land to build them. Then when we move to multifamily units and manufactured homes and parks, the story there is actually that there is a deficit of land to meet that need. So there is only 30 capacity for 24 multifamily units. There's a need for about 37 of those units. And so we'll talk about some strategies to try to address that issue. And similarly for manufactured homes and parks, which we separate out from manufactured homes that are on an individually owned lot, because they're a different kind of housing type. Okay, and then we move to Westford, and it's somewhat similar story in terms of the need versus the capacity. There is a significant amount of capacity for single-family detached houses and significantly less for townhomes, plexes and multifamily units. At the same time, the overall demand for and need for those types, housing types in Westford is relatively lower. And so we don't find a strong need to address creating more land supply for those housing types in Westford. One of the reasons for that is that Westford has actually a wider variety of residential zones. And more of those zones allow those housing types compared to Oak Ridge. Okay, let's move on to some community engagement highlights. So that sums up many of the key kind of findings of the technical analysis. We wanted to just kind of take you through some of the things we heard from this from the community. And then I think after that, we'll take a moment to pause and, you know, I can answer any questions. And then we'll go into the strategies after that. So we did a community survey in the fall of last year and got a great response rate. I think we had, I think we had over 200 or so responses, which is just pretty good for for a smaller town. And so what did we hear from those? We asked about in the survey, what are some of the most important housing issues that you would hope the city could address? And the three that rose to the top in the surveys were lack of housing that's affordable and lack of choices and housing types and sizes. So those are closely related and there are some ways the city can try to address that that issue. Thirty-one was the was competing pressures of short-term rentals. So this one was brought up quite often in the comments in the survey. And so we have a discussed a little bit more, but the implications are of that for housing development. We also asked about what are some ways you think the city can help to meet the need for housing? So what what would you like to see the city do? So what what would you like to see the city do? Um and one of them was creating additional opportunities for middle housing types. And so we defined that in the survey. Middle housing is things like a duplex or a triplex or some townhomes. Which are a little bit um higher density than a single-family house on its own lot. Uh but are of a similar scale that they could fit in at a neighborhood with a lot of single-family houses. Dedicating resources to help subsidize development of income-restricted houses was also seen as important. Uh so I think people recognize that there is. Uh a segment of the community that's always going to have a challenge me uh affording any kind of housing and. Resources to have income-restricted housing are important. Providing infrastructure to create new planned unit developments or single-family subdivisions. So there's a recognition that um. The infrastructure, the roads and streets and utilities to build are expensive. And if the city can wait for find ways to help to finance the uh the building of that infrastructure, it could help. So then we also had um an open house uh community meeting this um. This last March, uh just a few weeks ago. And I wanted to just kind of sum up some of the questions and um. I think that were brought up is I thought it might be helpful for you for you all to hear that. Um so I gave a similar presentation and then we had um about twenty or thirty people uh come and have some questions. Um. There were some questions about the source of our data on home values and recognizing that, you know, sources like Zillow and online sources. Tend to fluctuate a lot month to month. And so we did a little bit more digging into that since then and um. Did you find that the the data point we used is relatively accurate um as a estimate on an annual basis of what the median home value is? Um there was an interest in different kinds of multifamily housing, so um specifically cooperatives or cooperatively owned buildings were brought up. As well as mixed-use buildings. So there's a lot of interest in um could the city try to support more. Uh vertical mixed use in their their downtown. I mean by that is um. Storefronts on the ground floor of and commercial uses, businesses on the ground floor with apartments uh in um the floors above. Uh questions about the role of state and state requirements. So um the um. There were some question about uh whether the city needs to. Or is ob- is obligated to implement any of the strategies that are identified in the H and A. And for for your information, the answer to that. Uh is no, that um Oak Ridge is not subject to some of the requirements around housing planning that larger cities are subject to. Um however, I think um the the state um would uh like to see all cities taking steps to try to address their housing needs. Uh and but the what steps they take are very much open to um the cities to define. Uh interest in uh direct financial support for the city to offset the high cost of housing development and particularly infrastructure. This was something that was brought up that um that uh all the study is graded. It's good. The city is thinking about all their options, but um. What we really need is someone to help actually um fund uh particularly the in- infrastructure costs of housing development. And uh there's some questions about whether property tax policies could be used to incentivize development of vacant lots um. And largely the answer to that is there are there are some minor things the city uh can do. Uh in that realm, um but there are some limitations uh on that um. Under property tax law in the state. Could talk more about that if anyone is interested. Okay, I'm gonna pause there, give you a chance to kind of absorb some of that information and um ask any questions you have.
The council or commissioner have questions. Anybody on the Zoom? Sorry. African.
Um I wanted to know. If it was factored in about people also leaving town because. That that happens too.
Mm-hmm. So. Mm-hmm. Yeah, the when they do the population, I I say a population growth forecast. Um but it is population growth, the equation is. Kind of in migration minus out migration. So people moving out. Uh plus births minus deaths. Uh and so it does take into account all those. Factors of whether people are are actually leaving uh any particular city.
Okay, and then I asked a wonder about the available land for buildings. Uh did you guys? And I was how much of that is privately owned and how much of the city own?
Hmm. Yeah, so the um we didn't um isolate the properties that are city-owned. Um and so. The point of the buildable inventory is um. To take account for all the land because the um what that informs is. How the city might zone that land and what what types of housing or what density levels of housing. They um might permit. Uh and so even though the city doesn't own it. They still have a role at influencing the kind of housing that's built on it through the zoning code and land use regulations. Uh and so we didn't separate that out for this purposes. Uh if there's interest in that, one. You know, thing that's can be useful, a strategy the city has is to. If they have excess land that they own uh that they're not using for some other public use or facility. To uh engage in some kind of partnership with a developer to try to build housing that they would like to see. And so they have some. Uh value to offer developer to try to get some uh a certain kind of project developed. And that's a certainly a strategy a lot of cities uh are using nowadays. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Is any of the Zoom have a question? The counselor or commissioner?
Um my question would be, is there any projections on the income of the people who are going to be immigrated into the town? That is in the distribution between low income and the high and what those levels would be at?
Yeah, there there is. Um that is um included in the report. There is a appendix called the Housing Needs Projection Memo. And um there is one of the tables in there actually does have the um. Uh breakdown of the future housing needed by income level. Uh and so. It does break it down into a few different categories of income levels. Um and that is one factor. That influenced our thinking about the future housing need. Um. But another factor is the existing income levels of the existing community. And the fact that many of the residents in the existing community are cost burdened, so they're paying more for housing than they would be ideal to be affordable. That also influenced some of our thinking on projecting the need for. Uh a wider variety of housing types and particularly multifamily housing.
Okay, yeah, one of the lines of uh single-family homes, what's? The projection for the number of people in the income that would be able to afford a single-family home. And then the number of places that would have to be built. Essentially in town and walking distance for people at lower income that would probably be doing the the service jobs for the people in the single-family home.
I you were breaking up a little bit, so I couldn't tell if that was a question or just a comment.
The income levels are going to influence the amount of planning for single-family homes and low-income homes. Not just based on the number of low-income homes, but also have to be based on. How much income is going to be able to get in a job here in Oak Ridge for the low-income people? Because they're probably going to be doing the service jobs for the people buying single-family homes. So you have to balance the stock properly or you're going to over-invest in one side or the other.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's a great point. And I think because the data on the projected. Uh income levels of new residents is based on is tied to the income levels of current residents. We expect that it will um. It is accurate to the kinds of housing they would need. Um. So that's i- if the income levels of the people that move here significantly to Oak Ridge significantly change. Now that could change some of this, but that's one thing we don't um project happening in the future.
Well, that's something that has to be framed out later when you look at what you go along.
Can you tell me, maybe outside the scope of the study that you did, but um zombie houses or unoccupied long-term houses, you know, correctly impact the inventory? If you didn't take that into account in some of your in your studies. And in your experience and you've seen strategies implemented by other cities and you've looked at were effective and bad in the number of zombie homes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's certainly an issue. So um. When we project the number of units needed, we assume a vacancy rate. And so we assume that whatever the vacancy rate today is in the community. That that will stay similar going forward. And so what we that means is we're not assuming that those. It if those zombie houses have been reported as vacant to the census. Um which hopefully they are, but not one hundred percent certain. Uh then those aren't counted in your existing housing stock. And so um. It's unfortunate that they're not being used for housing. Uh but in terms of these projections, you're not counting on them being used in the future. Um so you're kind of planning for we need new housing because we're not sure whether those vacant houses will actually get filled up. Um but there there are things cities can do to try to incentivize. Those vacant houses to be filled and something we didn't explore in depth in this. Um but that's something I think we could. Uh potentially note in the report or add another strategy here to to explore that air issue further and try to identify some. Actions the city might be able to take. Um it's that that's definitely a possibility if there's interest from from Atlantic Commission and City Councils.
Excellent. Any other questions? Or we move on?
I just uh. I have this group prediction. Uh I I moved here because I like the small town and uh. I personally don't care if the town grows at all or more people come here, but I don't know how more people coming here benefits me. I left an area that had a population explosion and was basically driven out of there. It became a really undesirable place to live and uh. You know, you can have some more people. You know, you you look at the bigger picture, our human population is multiplied by more than five hundred and twenty years. Uh I don't think that's done us a lot of good. As a species, we've driven other plant animals to the extinction. Pushed them further away. The things that manufacture the air and the oxygen such as forests. And oceans become in worse condition. And I just, I don't see the benefit of more humans. We are surrounded by lakes and rivers and all kinds of beauty and stuff and. I'd rather see that than more people.
Thanks. Thank you. Anything else?
Well, the question is why more people?
Hmm.
I I guess I'll let you answer that if you want, or I can.
Sure. Yeah, I think there's an important um clarification to be made here is that. Uh this this planning process is um is relatively neutral about whether the city grows or not. Um so it is um we are. Assuming that the city will grow in the ways that it has grown in the past and um based on. What the Population Research Center projects into the future. So the question is really, if the city does grow, how can we best manage that growth? And also make sure that the city's regulations and policies are supporting the kind of growth. That would meet um communities' goals for how they want to grow. Uh and that could. Part of that is the kind of housing that can help meet the needs of the uh current residents and existing residents. Um and so just want to clarify, this is not necessarily promoting growth. It's just asking. If we assume growth's going to happen, how do we best manage it?
You're going to supply more homes to welcome in more people than. See, that's. That's what I I'm saying. If you're wanting to build more homes, then that's welcoming more people and. It, you know, whether. Say you're feeding hummingbirds or honeybees or whatever, you're going to get more of them. If you're feeding more fleas or rats or whatever, that's the way it's going to be providing. A situation that propagates a larger population. So in turn, you'll get this larger population. Wouldn't it's not stepping away from it, keep things at a more manageable level.
I can respond to that. So this is just a study that is being done for the city and and like you mentioned earlier, none of the strategies are mandated by the state for us to carry out. All those decisions will be with with you and with your city council on making any decisions about future growth. So. You'll have a, you know, a a wonderful opportunity to engage with your local council to to voice that opinion and and talk about it as it comes up. Uh but I will mention that this part of the question and answer is for council or the commissioners, so it will be a public comment later. So can you move on uh to the next section, please, if you can?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so I'm gonna go through now some strategies to respond to some of the issues and challenges I I talked about in the previous section. And I'll try to go through this fairly quickly and so we can uh have enough time for some discussion. So the each of the H and A reports lays out, excuse me, let me get back to that. Um. Lays out a set of strategies that uh the cities could use to uh address the housing needs. And so there are. I believe seven totals strategies in total. Most of them be are. Similar for Oak Ridge and Westford and both apply to both of the cities because your housing issues and needs are are largely somewhat similar. And so um uh we've noted here, there is the first strategy we'll talk about is specific to Oak Ridge. Another thing I'll do as we go through is um give you an indication of how the um people who attended the open house uh kind of um. Expressed their um support or concerns about each of these strategies. So we thought this would be helpful for you to know kind of how um the people who attended the open house, the public. Kind of uh felt about um what what implementing some of these strategies might mean or if they had questions. And so um we had a dot voting exercise where people put green or yellow or red dots up on boards that were associated with each of these strategies. Uh so the first is to identify some targeted areas to rezone. This is in Oak Ridge for higher-density housing. Uh so as we covered, there is a large surplus of land for a single-family detached houses. But there's a deficit of land needed for multifamily housing and manufactured homes and parks. And part of the reason for that is that the R two zone is is the medium-density zone in Oak Ridge. Uh it has has simply no buildable land remaining in it. Um the places that were uh buildable have been since it's been developed. The R one zone doesn't allow for multifamily or manufactured homes and parks. And so there's a need for meeting the need for that housing type. And so um. There there also, we believe, is a need for a zone that has higher densities than what the current. R two zone allows, which has a density limit of seventeen units per acre. That's a fairly. That's a fairly low density for um multifamily housing uh in even. Um you know, two or three story multifamily housing can exceed that density if you have fairly small units. Uh and so we recommend reconsidering that maximum density level for creating a new R three zone. Uh but what what we need to be done either way is finding some place where the city can support rezoning uh from R one. Uh or another zone to R two or in our do our three zone. So uh another strategy that would apply to both Oak Ridge and West for Westford and. It addresses the need for some of those multifamily types or town home and plex types. Is making some kind of targeted reductions to a minimum lot size requirements. And so uh in both of the cities, the um. Minimum lot size requirements scale up as you have more units on the site. Uh and they scale up to a point where it can be become a barrier to building. Those kind of smaller multi-unit buildings, so give an example of if you want to build a triplex. You might need to have a minimum lot size of ten thousand or fifteen thousand square feet. At the same time, most of the existing lots are likely less than that and so you can really only build maybe a duplex. But you might be forced to just build a single family house. So those minimum lot size are a pretty significant barrier to. The infill development of those smaller lots. Uh and so we recommend uh studying that further and um. Coming up with some ways to reduce those minimum lot size to make that easier to build those multi-unit or town home buildings. On some of those in on some of those existing lots. Uh third one here also has to do with density, so in the um. Oak Ridge and West for zoning codes, there is no um minimum density uh required in any zones. So there is a maximum density uh in in many of the zones. That's usually actually expressed as a minimum lot size per unit, it's a bit confusing, but um so. There is a good rationale for in some of the higher density zones to have a minimum density standard. And so the point of that is that. In those zones that you're trying to dedicate to and preserve for higher density housing. Which is the types of housing that are more likely to be affordable to people of lower incomes. That um you can ensure that it's actually built with that higher density housing. By using a minimum density standard, so that would preclude, for example, if you have a ten thousand square foot lot. You may not be um, that's probably a little too small, let's say the fifteen thousand square foot lot, you wouldn't be permitted to just build one house on that lot. You'd have to build at least two units, maybe it's two houses, maybe it's a duplex. Uh but if it's a higher density zone, be required that you have meet a minimum density standard. Um I should say in the um. Um open house, there was um. Kind of a mix of uh responses to this, some people were needed more info about it and were kind of neutral or unsure. Uh others had some concerns about it. Um and I think that um. We made a change here and read to specify some of the zones we think it should apply to, which are those higher density zones. Uh which that that change wasn't shown on the um. In the open house, so um we don't think this is necessary in the um. R one or other lower density zones in Westford, for example, just for those zones that you're. Trying to dedicate to building higher density housing. So we have a kind of a general strategy of identifying and removing unnecessary regulatory barriers. That's a long way of saying is that there are standards in the zoning code that. Um can become difficult to can make housing more difficult. I talked about minimum lot size. Uh there are others such as minimum setbacks, minimal parking requirements, minimum open space, minimum landscaped area. Um all of those can become uh especially as they interact together. Make it difficult for someone to build something like a townhouses or multifamily building. Uh and so the idea here is to just find those standards that we think are unnecessary and that could be replaced with different standards. Or removed, um it's a kind of a good opportunity to clean up the code, remove things that aren't really working and necessary. And keep parts of the code that, you know, are important for managing the way you want to grow in the future. Uh in the open house, most people supported this this concept. Uh the next one is to define and allow cottage cluster housing, so this is a very specific housing type. That's a housing type that's not defined today and would likely not be permitted in each of the cities. And that's because it's multiple small detached units that are on the same site, uh and so. It doesn't kind of fall into the category of a single family house or a multifamily, which are usually attached. And so often when a developer wants to build something like this, they have to go through some kind of special review process. And uh like a planned unit development, uh and that in itself can be a barrier, a deterrent to building this housing type. Uh this is something that's um being built more and more often, uh kind of combines having a little bit higher density. So there's some economic efficiencies there, but also you have um detached units, which a lot of people. Uh prefer than um than having units that are attached like in townhouses or multifamily. Most people in the open house supported this, this concept of defining some places where you would allow this kind of housing. Reducing barriers to building uh new manufactured dwelling parks is another strategy. So uh we mentioned that manufactured gelling parks are an important part of the housing mix. They provide a source of of uh of relatively affordable, lower cost housing. Uh each of the um I believe Oak Ridge has um uh. Two to three um mobile home parks today. Um they, but in the future, um there are no places in Oak Ridge or Westford. Where a new manufactured dwelling park could be permitted, uh that's because in Oak in. Oak Ridge, it's only allowed in uh one zone, the R two zone, and it is um, there's no more buildable land in that zone. And so um under state law, actually in this case, this is one where state rules would require that the city um. Uh create um opportunities to build multi manufactured dwelling parks. Um and so under state law, this is something that needs to um change and needs to be made to make sure that there are opportunities to build those. So there is a mix of support and some concerns from uh attendees at the open house about this strategy. So the last uh strategy here is to evaluate the need to limit short term rentals. And when I say short term rentals, I'm referring to Airbnb or VRBO. Any of those where you're renting a unit for less than thirty days, usually just a few nights, right? Um so there is some concern in the community that the amount of short term rentals. Has risen and it's risen to the level where it might be taking long term rental or ownership housing. Out of that housing stock and and contributing to the issue of. Uh kind of a housing shortage and um lack of housing options. Uh this is a a valid concern and something that some cities in Oregon have placed caps on short term rentals to try to address. That issue. There's also been some state um research on this topic recently and they're going to be writing some guidance on. On where and how it is most appropriate to limit short term rentals. Be based on how they might affect your housing market. Um at this stage, we don't have a. Clear recommendation whether or not to limit short term rentals, um but we do recommend that you study that further. Um and evaluate whether that's uh necessary. Uh so the a mixed uh response from the open house on this of kind of either just needed more info or had some concerns. So to sum up, um. We, I wanted to put forth some suggestions for how we might revise some of the strategies based on the feedback we had at the open house. Um but also want to hear from you and see if you would like to see any other revisions uh to the strategies or any strategies removed. Uh and so um for the first, we don't recommend any changes to that, think it's necessary. Uh reducing minimum lot sizes and establishing minimum density, that's really most important in those higher density zones. And that wasn't specified in the uh the report, and so I think that's something we could add to the report to say that it is. Uh most important to do this in the higher density zones. The uh next two strategies about barriers and cottage cluster housing were were fairly well supported. The um manufactured dwelling parks, as I mentioned, is um required by state law to um address that issue. Uh so we recommend keeping that as a something that the city is going to do in the future. Lastly, the short term rentals, we um I think there was some concern or confusion that that might mean that there is. That we're not proposing that there be a cap on short term rentals and that's not the recommendation we think it needs further study because it wasn't in the scope of this project. Uh and so we would emphasize in the report that it's just a study at this stage and it's not recommended that there is a cap um at this stage. Okay, so that is the the strategies and I can go back to any slide as you need, but I'd like to give you some chance to discuss.
Okay, on the manufactured parks. Now, my understanding, you buy your unit and you rent. Or you park. And the problem with that is that you see, um especially older people getting priced out of their parks. And so, you know, they get bought up, the jack rises up, and the people plan forward and they have to. And they lose what they have.
Unfortunately, that that is a um something that happens often, um and um. Unfortunately, it can be very hard to move manufactured dwelling parks or manufactured dwellings, um sometimes it's illegal, sometimes it's just not economical. Uh so one option to consider if if the city wants to address that concern would be to. Some cities have adopted uh what is called a manufactured home park preservation zone. And the um intent of that is to um. Prevent the redevelopment of the park into another use, so say it can't be redeveloped into. A single family subdivision or or something like that. Um that's one option to try to prevent the displacement of um mobile home park uh residents. Um it's a zoning tool. There are other tools that the city could try to implement to. Um make it more difficult to uh to evict um a tenant in a mobile home park. Um those weren't within the scope of this work, um but that isn't as an option for the city. In terms of new manufactured dwelling parks, um that is um. A downside, but it is something that is required by state law that the city allow those. Um I would also note that it is something that happens to tenants and um apartments that they part of, you know, evicted when. Uh rents are rising, they can't afford it as well. Um we know that's different for someone in a mobile home where they've invested in the home itself, um so it is definitely a disadvantage. Um but it is required by state law and it does provide an affordable option for some um residents.
Um I just wanted to mention that I could think of six manufactured home. Parks in the Oak Ridge area while we were talking, so do you think that? We're still required, you already have six? Or is it, I mean, is it based on how? What the need is, I guess? Um. Do you know what we actually have, as you said, two?
Yeah, I might have, I might have misquoted, I think it's a two or three, it just the I was thinking maybe just of the bigger ones, I might have missed them of the smaller ones, so um. But uh the the requirement from the state is applied to your zoning. And this it's the requirement is that you must show that you have um. Enough land to um meet the need for development of new manufactured dwelling parks. Based on your population projection and your housing needs analysis or study, um and so. Um based on our methodology, we show a need for a new many familiar tractor dwellings and parks. Is it's based on the percentage of the existing housing stock that is manufactured dwellings in parks. If that carries forward in the future, there will be need to be new parks, uh and so the. The letter of the law does not say that it is based on how many parks you currently have. Um there may be an opening there to make an argument to the state that you have enough. Um but um and it's something also that the state. Um I'm unsure how they enforce it, so I can't say whether or not. This will be kind of legal issue for the city at any point in time, we're just pointing it out as it's not compliant with the state law. That opens up the possibility for a legal action somewhat at some point. Um and the city would not have a good grounds right now to say that they are meeting this requirement.
Okay.
I'm I'm not quite understanding the point on this. The law is saying, the state is saying, if the city has to have area zone that are allowing trailer parks. Or is it saying that the state is saying that the city is required to have trailer parks? I mean.
The first. Yeah, no, it's the first, yeah. It's that it applies to the city's zoning. So you must have the opportunity for them to be built in the zoning. Don't have to build them.
Anyone on the Zoom have a question? Or a recommendation? Nothing heard, I guess, so thank you.
Okay, well, we're at the conclusion really of our agenda and so. What I do now is just to kind of talk about the next steps and then if no further questions or comments, I'll talk about what we'll we'll do going forward. Uh so.
I'm sorry, if I could, uh there is an option for public comment, I'd like to open it up to anyone in the public if you're willing to hang around.
Of of course. Mm hmm. Um just to wrap up this, so people know where this is headed, um so um. I mentioned some of the revisions that we would make to the Housing Needs Analysis Report and so. We will move forward with those, um and um any others that you would suggest during this meeting. Uh um or if you'd like to provide further input in writing, um we can do that and we will attempt to um. Uh incorporate that to the extent we can. Um in the next um step after that would be that each of the city councils will hold meetings to adopt. The H and E report um by a resolution, uh so similar as you adopt other uh policy documents uh or. Um things that are intended to guide the um future work of the city, uh and um. Then following that really um is where our scope of work ends and um. The work of of, you know, James and Rick and everything there at the staff to actually implement. Uh some of those strategies that are identified, um some of them are more complex. Um and require more public engagement in the future, some of them may be a little bit easier to do in the short term. Uh we think most of them could could be completed over the next one to three years. That's a, that's not a commitment though, I think I would leave it to James or Rick to give us a clearer sense of what they think is feasible. Um but there is a timeframe over which these will need to be um implemented because there are some additional engagement, probably some additional study needed. Um in order to really implement many of these strategies. Okay, so that's the next steps and I'd like to take other questions from commissioners or from the public.
Um yeah, I have a couple, um for starters, so. What we would be adopting, not now, but in the near future, is just your report, which. Does not include actual recommendations for how to change our codes, right? We still have to figure that out on our own. Or is that something that you also provide us with?
No, yeah, so it is just the report, which is a description of um, you know, our recommended kinds of changes. Um but yes, we don't include any um specific code amendment language. That would be required to actually amend the code to do that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so then are we? By accepting the. The report that you've written, the way that it is, we're not necessarily agreeing to. Reduce our lot sizes, even if, even though it's in the report, we're not saying we will do that. It's just that we accepted that it's a recommended item. And then in the future, if we decide to change that, that's fine, or we can say we aren't going to change that. Is that right?
Yeah, I'd say if you're undecided about whether you think in general any of these strategies are a good idea. Then um the way I would approach that is to rephrase the strategy. So you want to keep it on the table, but you're not quite sure because you need more information, which is valid, because this is, you know. Some of these are are complex and they're important to consider what the impacts might be and how you might want to do it. So we would rephrase it to say um something like um evaluate uh or um. Assess options for or consider. Um we can do that um if you're uncomfortable with the way it's phrased, that it feels like it's you're committed to doing it. Um that I think would be a good way to address it if you're undecided on some of these strategies.
Well, I think for me personally, I definitely would like to understand it better before I would say I was comfortable with it. Especially on um. Quantity of people in in a certain amount of space, like um. I'm not sure I understand how a report is written. But I do know that when I go to Eugene and I see little neighborhoods, that's where I actually grew up. I grew up on a regular city lot. And now they're putting four houses in the same amount of space where I grew up in one house. And I think it's very unattractive. Just my opinion, I'm not sure what one C Oak Ridge would like that in the future. So can I understand better what what exactly the minimum lot size need? Or change the words?
So, yeah, that.
Go ahead.
Okay, um so uh. Those kind of the concerns about the character of the community in what new housing um. Developments uh look like and whether they're compatible with the character of Oak Ridge. I want to just emphasize are all valid and legitimate and um why this process doesn't end with us just striking the the minimum lot sizes. This process ends with this is a, this is a tool you have that could make it easier to. Build housing that might be more affordable. And so it's a tool in the toolbox. Um but um you need to think about it um holistically and and what other um considerations there might be. And that's something is is um uh addressed in the report is that. Um the form and character of uh new development is important, too. And um uh there, but there are ways to address that that may be less of a barrier to. Uh more affordable housing types. Um so it's kind of. The idea would be to kind of swap something that is becoming a barrier to more affordable housing with something that gets you to. Uh some development that's compatible with what you would like to see, um but allows some more affordable housing types.
And again, any changes to portness would be first be vetted with planning commissions.
Yeah.
Bring a recommendation to us and have final say.
I understand this is a recommendation that you're going on to be pushing, right? But they're not, they're not set in stone, which is true. So that's basically what I wanted to make sure I understood.
Spot events. I just wanted to mention, most of the changes are recommending would require public hearings as well. So. Um much like the um. TSP require public hearings, things, these are required the same. So to change the zoning and a lot of the plans here also. Would be need to be addressing the comp plan, those again are major public hearings.
And also the. I suggest if you're uncomfortable with one of the strategies in the White Board, you can probably just email James or Rick and they can make it any more flexible. Sound like that's the case. Anyone else in the room? Any questions, comments?
I have just one question for you. I know that it's not, I know I'm issue, I don't do anything saying that, but it doesn't. You know, you think that it's going to prevent people from having homes and it's causing a shortage of housing inside of. Our community, but it really doesn't. They really don't. They they help the community. We bring in tourists. They spend money here. We pay taxes like everybody else, more so because, you know, we pay the same as hotel hotels. A lot of people don't think that. Um I think that people should be allowed to do with their property what they want to do with their property. You know, we have vacation, people that have vacation homes, you know, if there's two vacation homes, are you going to start taxing them? Because maybe one vacation home and come here from Portland once a month. You know, there's a zombie homes, you know, you're going to tax them more. It it would just, it wouldn't hurt me per se. Taxes get put onto my short-term rentals because I pass them on to the guests. And then the guests won't come. And then, you know, and I know that people say that there's too many and I don't know how to get our money. I've been doing business for, I think this is my third year. It has been very consistent. You know, as far as my thing, I'm making more money doing long-term rentals. But with the landlord tenant laws, the way that they are, it's it's just too much that I have. Like I lose money in the, in the land labor. It looks like I just didn't save any money. Or it's not, because people just, I have to take care of my house. You know, and there's other people in there. I don't have any say over what goes on there, you know, even if I go in once a month, they still manage to do crap. You know, and I know there's people that have long-term rentals, they have tenants and whatnot, but it's it's not always that way. So I just wanted to pick that up because I know there's a lot of confusion in this community about short-term rentals and that were hurting the housing market. But it wouldn't be, you know, I have ended up selling my house in Belize. Somebody with that median income could not buy my house.
Thank you. Any other comment? Here?
I I understand.
James, anything to sort of.
No, I was just going to remind folks that um this meeting, like the open house, has been recorded and will be available. On the city website, both as a council meeting and on the housing needs analysis webpage on our website.
All right, Kim, any closing remarks?
Uh I just say thank you for uh your, you know, time and and good. Critical questions today and um I've I've really enjoyed working with uh with the city and um and uh. Will um definitely accept any other um comments or thoughts you have you like to send over email. Uh but we we'd like to make sure that when we get to um to the time to to adopt the um. Uh the report that you feel comfortable with what includes and and um feel comfortable moving forward. So uh open to um. Continue a little feedback and um, yeah, thank you for um taking the time tonight.
I appreciate all the hard work that you did uh doing the analysis and will you be dialed in on those adoption? Uh say council meetings, you think?
Yes.
Okay. Last chance, last alibis, anyone?
What kind of time line do you want feedback by? That's probably James's question, couple of weeks.
Yeah, I would say.
Right, Jane.
I was gonna say two, two weeks would be best. Um I think um we need to wrap up the whole project in terms of our our. Um involvement by the end of June. So we do need to start to get those hearings scheduled.
Thanks very much.
Hmm, great. Thank you.
That's all we have on the agenda. You, Jeremy. Thank you.
Thank you.